Commissioners for April this time. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair, Sulee.
Commissioner Lee is going to lead us in our invocation.
Will you bow your heads with bended less?
Hold on a minute. Please. We need, we need quiet for the invocation, please. Okay.
Will you bow your heads with bended less praise? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of help we need to fulfill our callings. God, we thank you for the men and women who serve in our county for leadership. Lord, we thank you for all that you allowed us to do. We ask that you provide us with the knowledge that we need to approach each situation in the best way possible. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Will you stand and join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. I'll open the public hearing. This time, Ms. Lance, if you'd like to come forward.
Chairman. So tonight I have a subdivision ordinance text amendment. During the process of updating the Sampson County subdivision regulations to be compliant with Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes, many revisions took place in adopting the new subdivision regulations for Sampson County. New types of exemptions were introduced to Sampson County as well as plat review procedures and other new development requirements.
Ms. Lance, could I stop you one minute, please?
Yes.
One thing, I overlooked the agenda. I need to get approval on the agenda first.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we have it passed. Now you may continue.
Yes, sir.
And I guess the public hearing is still in session here.
After receiving requests from citizens and observing the operation of the current subdivision regulations, Sampson County Planning and Zoning Staff found that language which exists in Section 606 Access Requirements B should be improved to provide greater clarity regarding shared driveway access requirements when creating a new minor subdivision. The proposed subdivision ordinance text amendment was reviewed by the Sampson County Planning Board at their March 13, 2023 meeting. The proposed text amendment is a proposal to revise the text regarding Section 606B. The text amendment clarifies that major subdivisions lots may only be served by internal access streets and may not have frontage along public streets in the NC DOT system. The text amendment also provides that minor subdivisions may have no more than five driveways that access an existing public or private street, subject to the driveway and subdivision standards of the NC DOT. In cases where more than five minor subdivision lots will access any one public or private street, one or more shared driveways will be required, such that no more than five driveways access any one street. The Planning Board voted 3-0 to recommend approval of the subdivision ordinance text amendment. The recommendation for approval is based off the Planning Board's decision that the text amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Sampson County Land Use Plan. The Planning Board found that the text amendment is in best public interest and recommends approval of the Sampson County Board of, to the Sampson County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Does anyone have any question? I have a question. You're talking about the double driveway. Is, that's in subdivisions only?
Yes, sir. That, so it's been, we initially, you've got major subdivisions and minor subdivisions. It used to be that you could not have more than five minor subdivisions. When they updated the ordinance, when they did the 160D rewrites, they increased that number to 10. So you can now do up to 10 lots in a minor without having to go through all of the, you know, regulations that you have to do, to do a major subdivision. But there's concern, you know, about having too many driveways feeding onto a stretch of road. We initially drafted this where it would be no more than five. We've modified that after the, our planning board has looked at this, I think at about three or four different meetings. We've modified that to be five driveways per road. So if you have a minor that affronts, or, you know, more than one road, you can have up to five on each road. But there would be shared driveways required if you had 10 all along the same road.
These are roads in the subdivision, right? Not, not state roads?
No, these would be state roads, driveways going out on the state roads in a lot of cases.
How do we police this? And the reason I'm asking this because I've had some conversation with some folks in Cumberland County and Hornet, and they've run into some situations to share driveways. The homeowners had situations to where they had disagreements, and they had to be called. Like one, I'll give you a for instance. One driver, one guy had a guy come in with a cement foot, put the pool in. He cracked the driveway. Neighbor's mad. That's my only concern is how we, how we, I said that as we move forward because if we had those problems, it could be a, you know, I need a contingency plan is what I'm looking, I guess, that we can help these people out.
Yeah, and I mean, candidly, planning and zoning is not going to get into policing, you know, neighbor on neighbor disputes where people can't get along that share a driveway. I will tell you, for example, there was a subdivision not in our jurisdiction in another town recently that was approved that had a lot of different driveways feeding onto a road. And I know that NC DOT was upset about that situation. So we're trying to strike a balance between letting folks develop, but then also be mindful of, you know, safety concerns when you have, you know, 10 driveways all in one area feeding in.
It, it, but it's, it's subdivisions only, right? So if, if it's out on a state road and there's a house of 500 yards down the road, it, it has no effect if they, that far apart?
It's, it's minor subdivisions. Major subdivisions are not going to be able to feed directly onto a state road. You've got to have one access road and all the lots in the subdivision, you know, use the internal access roads that you were talking about.
And I'm, I'm asking because I've been approached by it already concerning that because Sampson County is a rural county, and we're starting to grow, for example, in Salemburg area. You got, you got a row of houses on state road, and then you're going to require a double driveway, and, and we run into these problems. I just see that as a potential.
Yeah, if, if there's separate lots that were subdivided by separate people at separate times, this is not going to apply to them.
It's, it's in the beginning, okay.
This is where you have one person that's going in doing a subdivision at one time, creating sort of a, you know, a development.
I got you. Any other questions at this time?
Could I, may I ask, could you define the difference between a major subdivision and a minor?
Yes, ma'am. A, a minor is going to be 10 parcels or less where you're not creating a new road or, or right of way that's, that's servicing the, the subdivision.
Thank you.
Any other question? All right. First, public hearing.
I move that we approve the subdivision ordinance text amendment.
Second. You've got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right. This is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. I'll open another, another public hearing. Ms. Sauer and, and Matthews. Matthews.
Good evening, Commissioners. As was mentioned in December 2022, Board of Commissioners meeting our GIS and 911 Addressing Coordinator, Ms. Jesse Matthews has been working on the Highway 24 project for some time to make sure that our road names and address numbers of residents and structures meet the county's ordinance and the NINA, which is the National Emergency Numbering Association standards. Before you tonight's entire package of documents that was, that include a summary of the changes along with the specific address changes and maps. This information was distributed in a press release and social media outlets in early March so that residents had time to review it. Mailing was also sent to property owners and residents affected by the changes. The notices were also posted in three post offices, each town hall and the courthouse as required, and NC DOT has approved the recommendations. As of today, we've received a few inquiries and, and a couple of concerns about the new changes, and they've been addressed. During this process, we did come across a technical issue that involved the need to change three addresses for residents to avoid confusion for the residents and the first responders. The revised proposal was posted on the county website, and we will individually notify these occupants of those three residents to ensure that they're aware of the changes. Like to inform the public that if this recommendation is approved by the board, it will take some time for the post office and delivery companies that, like FedEx, UPS, and Amazon, to make changes in their systems. We will send all the information to the post office this week, and their databases will be updated within the month. Most of the major companies, delivery companies, get their information from the post office, but we have no control over how long it will take for that to be uploaded into their system. One major carrier that we called told us that their information is gathered from the post office, and they upload it every 30 days. So Jesse and I are here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Anyone have questions? We have two people signed up with some questions. Ms. Butler?
Good evening. My concern was, I'm Margaret Butler, about the, the dead end road of 24. You know, when they put their, the superhighway, it came behind our house where we, it used to be in front. So I, excuse me. I live at 7786 Roseboro Highway, and I was wondering if they were going to rename that road.
I'll have to get Mr. Sauer to address that. Mr. Sauer?
7786 Roseboro Highway.
7786 Roseboro. You're on the section 7786. Yes, ma'am. So the proposed road name change for that would be to Bend Road.
Bend Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's a dead end road. We was thinking about Snow Hill Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the road name committee met and, and we came up with these names for the, the changes.
Okay.
So it would be, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Parker?
State your name and address, please.
Whitney Parker, 7745 Roseboro Highway. I had the same question. I want to submit a name for consideration for that, that road. I don't know. I guess he was saying it was already automatically named, or I want to second a notion of Snow Hill Drive for that, that road, Roseboro Highway.
Mr. Sauer, you address this.
I'm sure I understood the question, I've heard the question.
She was saying that we wanted a name, but it's submitted to Snow Hill Drive. I want to second that notion, but you're saying y'all already chose the, the name.
Correct.
We didn't hesitate so long.
No, I was determined by the road naming committee that if we had to change 10 roads and 200-plus addresses, that it might become cumbersome.
So I would still like to have consideration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else have any questions concerning the, the roads, the naming of the roads? Not I close the public hearing. Wait a minute. Please, please come up. We'll continue the public hearing.
Good afternoon. Michael Fisher, the owner of 5656 Roseboro Highway. I see in your proposal that you want to name that Bennett Lane or something like that. And my question is, why would you want to name it Bennett Lane when the front door faces 24?
The reason the suggestion is for it to change to Bennett Lane is because the driveway now attaches to Bennett Lane and not the highway. So the correct address for emergency responders going out to respond to an emergency would need to look for that driveway on Bennett Lane.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we rename the roads as recommended.
Your second. Second. You've got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, let's see. We, we got another set of roads. We're open to a hearing for that.
The road naming committee recommends two new private lanes in the county. The first is PBT 1926 1260 with the recommended name of Crespo Lane. The second is PBT 242 3210 with the recommended name of Lyndale Lane.
Okay. Anyone have questions on this? Anyone in the audience have questions? Hearing none. We'll close. All right. Okay, please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Maddie Howell. I live on 288 Stagecoach Lane in Autreville. We don't have an issue with the renaming, but many of us have bought metal reflective house numbers from our local fire departments. Would we be able to get those replaced for no additional charge with the same ones that we purchased?
Okay. Mr. Sauer?
The county's not involved with doing the, the actual signs, but there are the rescue squads in some of the fire departments that do that, and that information's on our website.
Okay, so that would be taken up with them?
Right.
Okay. And I did have another question.
Sure.
I realize that a lot of people are going to have to update their driver's license with the new address. And to do that online, you have a $3 convenience fee. And then the price for the driver's license. Would people be able to get any assistance with that?
Hi. Anyone have an answer? I don't.
Because I understand that you have 30 days to change your address on your driver's license.
Yeah. Let's, let's, let's keep it down, please, so we can understand here, here the young lady. That's a good question. I, I don't.
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of that either. I guess you would have to take it up with, with DOT.
Okay. So there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any kind of help with that? Because usually you would.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. It's a state issue. We're, we're more or less mandated to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else with any questions? Unfortunately, progress creates some of these things. And of course, the, the new highway system has done that. And of course, to be able to get 911 assistance is, is required, and we're, it's not something we want to do, but we have to do. Let's see. Close the public hearing. All right, I move that we name the roads as recommended. Is there a second? Second. Got two of them. All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right. Now we will, Mr. Clark, I think you're up.
Yes, I think you were handed out some information we received from Adams Company about the awarding of bids under the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Lawn Pool Program. On March 29, bids were received at the county administration office. Bids were opened and read. You have a bid tabulation attached to your materials. We are recommending the winning bidder for the unit 20-16 to Thomas J. Holland. This is contingent upon the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency providing approval because we only received one bid. The unit 20-17 would also go to Thomas J. Holland, and it is contingent upon the same reason. And we would also be asking that the county manager be allowed to sign the award for each contract as it is approved by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Clark? All right. Entertain a motion.
I move that we.
That we accept the bid to Thomas J. Holland.
Got a motion to second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. All right. It's unanimous. All right. Now we're up to the Sutton Town Immense Water System Expansion Project. Mr. Ross? Mr. Turle, if you have something to say, we're interested in hearing you. What you got to say?
Oh, just one thing I want to, before we get to that, to give you an update on. I've been having a lot of inquiries about the Ivanhoe area. The Ivanhoe project is in progress now. We've done 60% of the survey work now. And after survey work's done, the actual designing will be done, and then the bidding process. It's going to take some time. It's 27 miles of line we've got to design and put in, but I want just to let everyone know that the work is in progress for the Ivanhoe project.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
I guess to, we'll go back to the immense Sutton Town area water system expansion projects. So if you remember last year, we submitted two different funding applications, one for Mince and one for Sutton Town. The funding was going to be through the Division of Water Infrastructure. And those two points, we ended up not receiving a funding award offer. However, the points for those, since it's a point-based system, received very highly on the point system. And we believe that the probability that we didn't receive the funding for that is because we requested an all grant offer. And the grant for the ARPA funds ran out at this last cycle. So the ARPA funds were not as prevalent as we were anticipating from past projects like Ivanhoe. So even though we did not receive funding, it seems very likely that these projects would receive some type of grant and loan offer. Based on the last project, Sampson County would be eligible for up to 75% grant for these projects. And with the current funding offers that the applicant, if you do receive 75% grant, the remaining 25% loan would be at 0% interest. So over 20 years, which is really good offer. So talking with the county, we have decided to combine the two applications into one. And it would be Mince and Sutton Town project area encompassing all of that. And I believe I sort of gave you a handout. It has the description of what's all included inside of those projects. It would be, I think, around 30-odd miles of water main extensions, a proposed well in the Mince area, booster pump stations in the Sutton Town area, and some other associated infrastructure build-outs to help support the system expansion for the long linear footage of pipe. And I want to say one thing. If we do a well in this area, we are assuming that it will not require any treatment passages, chlorine, and not like we have at the other well sites. But, so the total funding requested for this, we're kind of still working to get the numbers exactly right, but we're updating it based on recent bids that we have received in the last month, and that's helping us refine our numbers. But we're about $22 million, and that would be construction, contingency, funding administration, engineering, and surveying, all total. So that's what we are basing it on right now, and I do not expect it to exceed that amount. And this time, I guess, are there any questions before I make a recommendation?
Anyone have questions?
Just, just here, you have 20 million, not yet.
Yeah, that, that's all right. I went to say, so after we sent this out, we had a bid opening for another project that we had a lot of the similar-sized water main extensions. And so I wanted to make sure we updated that before we put it on the funding application based on those recent bids.
And, and to make it clear, this, this will, there will be no tax dollars involved in this.
So yeah, this is all just going to funnel down through the Division of Water Infrastructure State Revolving Fund.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
So I guess I'll go, my recommendation is for the county to, in form of motion, approve the attached resolution required by Division of Water Infrastructure for the Sutton Town Immense Area Water System Expansion.
Thank you very much. I move we adopt the resolution approving the Sutton Town Mince Water System Expansion Funding Application and naming the county manager as the representative authorized to execute and file the application on behalf of the county. Do I get a second?
Second.
You got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, Mr. Starling, I think you're up next.
Mr. Chairman, you have a beginning at page 58 of your agenda materials. These are new proposed rules and regulations and minimum standards for the Clinton-Sampson Airport. Last year, when we had our annual meeting with the Division of Aviation, which is a part of NC DOT that oversees airports, they noted that our rules had some date on them and encouraged us to take a look at updating them. The Airport Advisory Board looked at these at three different quarterly meetings. They voted at their last meeting to recommend approval. They did make one modification, which is noted in your materials. It's on page 63. Article 2, Section 8 of the rules. Premises by whomever owned shall not be used for the storage. They added outside of the hangar of vehicles, equipment, or items that are not utilized in connection with aeronautical activity. That was the only change that was made at the last meeting. If the board chooses, these will need to be approved by the Board of Commissioners and will also need to be approved tomorrow night by the Clinton City Council since you jointly own and operate the airport with the city of Clinton.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. I move we adopt the new rules and regulations and minimum standards for the Clinton-Sampson Airport as recommended.
Second.
You've got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's approved. Unanimous. All right. We're down to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts about it?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
You've got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous again. All right, that brings us to Mr. Causey on the consideration of late property tax exemption. Number five.
Mr. Chairman, what you've got is a late property tax exemption request that is fairly standard for how we process those. It has been submitted by Jim Johnson, and the, he is recommending that we allow a late property tax exemption for the farm credit lending services.
Okay. And is that one half?
No, sir. I think that's just letting them file late.
Let it file late, I guess. Okay. All right. Anybody got a question on this? Make it a motion.
I move that we approve the late property tax exemption application from Farm Credit. As recommended.
That's two seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that's approved. All right. I think we're down now to Mr. Causey, your report again.
Yeah, two things to, to mention to you. One is very simple. Just wanted to remind the board that you've got the board. I don't think you have to reset us to reconvene because that's separately advertised. But you've got the Board of Equalization and Review that is set to begin at 1:00 PM on Monday, April 24, in case anybody has forgotten it. The, the other issue that I wanted to, to talk about for, for just a minute is the status of the market study. This is something that is well underway. Mrs. Dillman and her. Mrs. Dillman and her staff have been working fervently with the people to get them the information that they need to facilitate both a good and qualitative study. As we previously said, we're expecting that study to be completed in the May-June timeframe. Will be the first one to tell you that hopefully we will be delivering our budget request in mid-May in order to make sure that it is approved by the end of June. So then that begs the question, well, Mr. Causey, what are you going to do about the market study? And at that point in time, Mr. Chairman, we'll have some studies, we'll have some discussions as we prepare it. It is our expectation that we would try to guesstimate as much as we can what the total bill may be to potentially include that in the budget considerations, which means it will not be, the erases will not necessarily be implemented on July first, but they won't necessarily have to wait a year. So we'll have the appropriated money, hopefully, to sometime during the year to come back and consider the market study rates. And we understand from talking to each of you that basically you want to be in possession, if we can do it, to be able to do it as quickly as possible thereafter.
Anyone got any question? And what's the date again that it'll be?
We're looking in the mid-, late-May or early-June timeframe.
All right. Anybody have any questions? All right, we're down to the public comment section. Would you, Shannon, would you read the rules?
In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A dash fifty-two-point-one, a period of time is reserved for comments from the public on topics that are not included in our agenda. Speakers will be called forward in the order that they registered, address the board from the lectern, and begin by stating their name and address. Each speaker is allotted three minutes for comments. The light on the lectern will turn yellow with one minute remaining and will turn red and chime when the allotted time is up. We ask that when your time is up, you promptly conclude your comments and return to your seat. If time allows, those who failed to register prior to the meeting will be given the opportunity to speak following those who registered in advance. The public comment section is intended to provide a forum for the board to listen to citizens, and there should be no expectation that the board will answer questions raised during this time. A full copy of our policies and procedures is available at the registration table as well as on our website.
Thank you very much. Before we start that, I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Godwin. He's got some comments.
Good evening, everyone. Truly, I want to thank all the veterans that came out this evening. We have mentioned about the memorial. It's not finalized, but there have been words spoken about what to do, so we're following up on that. I want to thank you for coming out tonight, your participation, but it's a concern of us too, what we do with it, just like it is with you. But we have to consider how we're going to do it and what we're going to do. So veterans, stand up strong. Thank you for serving, and we know one thing, we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. At this time, Mr. Beasley.
Good afternoon. I'm Craig Beasley with the USDA Wildlife Service, and I'd like to address the issue of beaver damage in Sampson County. I'm sure everybody up here knows that we have an issue in this county. The best way to address this issue would be through the trapping. We have had, I've done approximately forty-eight, there was forty-eight jobs done in Sampson County throughout the whole county. Thirty-nine of them, if I'm right, were blown with explosives. So all the, just going on in Sampson County that you hear these explosives, that's probably me. Everybody calling in, wanting to know what's going on. But thirty-nine dams I have blown approximately throughout the county, six hundred and seventy-seven hours. And the best way to handle these beaver situation is through trapping. Beavers are not going away. And all they do is cause damage, blocking roadways. I do a lot for farmers. I do a lot for land, individual landowners. And through trapping, you can save money through the trapping situation. I'm with the Beaver Management. The resources that were saved were two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in timber resources, six thousand, sixty thousand, five hundred dollars in crops, ten thousand dollars in impoundments, and eighteen thousand and five hundred dollars in roads and bridges. It's against the law in North Carolina to relocate beavers, so therefore you have to trap them. So I would take any questions, if anybody has any questions.
How many years does it take to get rid of these beavers once you?
That's a good question, because there are some areas that, when you trap, you don't have any more issues. Sometimes it takes two, three, four, five years. And then there's some issues, some land issues, the closer to the river you get, the more issues you have. So these beaver can go and come when they want to, when you have, if you've noticed, when it rains a lot, storms, it rains two or three weeks, or storms, or hurricanes, every ditch is full. You can drive along the highway and look, that's DOT, I do a lot of DOT work. And the beavers have been here for a long time, so they ain't going away pretty soon. I can tell you that, they're here to stay. And through trapping is the only way you can get them out. Sometimes you don't have any more issues for four, five years. Sometimes you may have to go back two or three times to get them.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, Mr. Beasley.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I must say, you must be good with your job, because I see you have your ten fingers. I'm pleased to see that.
Takes pretty big traps to trap big beavers and use explosives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilliam? Ms. Gilliam? Please state your name and address.
Latonya Gillam, eight seventeen West Second Street, Garland. As a high school history educator in my classroom, I'm often tasked with debunking myths, legends, teaching how, the hows and whys of historical narratives, all the while teaching my young scholars to think critically. I also have to admonish them when they attempt to enjoy the fruits of someone else's labor when completing an assignment. Well, tonight, I have come before the Board of Commissioners to do the same thing in this realm. First and foremost, the Ivanhoe community thanks each and every commissioner for their completing of their assignment by voting to pursue the Water Infrastructure Grant via the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Over a year ago, the citizens of Ivanhoe began to press their way each month to secure the humane and basic right to have clean public drinking water, and their efforts paid off in receiving a thirteen million dollar-plus grant. But the recollection of that journey to a reality has met with fuzzy memories of the events and an unsolvable math equation that has led to a series of alternative history facts, or as I call them, lies. In the beginning, the presence of the Ivanhoe community was requested through Edward Gillam, who at the behest of our very own county commissioner, Letha Lee, reached out to the area churches, asking people to make their plea for water publicly known in this forum. Prior to that time, Ivanhoe was not on the map to be considered for water. Proceeding the initial meeting, it was Edward Gillam who virtually attended two webinars discussing the American Rescue Act and the water infrastructure grants being afforded to unasserved areas like Ivanhoe. During the comment portion of the commissioners' meeting, he mentioned that grant, to which our commissioner asked me, what grant is he talking about? So that night, he passed direct information on in contacting the director of the NC DEQ to Commissioner Lee. That is when the completion of the assignment began to falter. When a group assignment is made in my classroom, everyone shares credit. That is what happened when Governor Cooper's office attended the ceremony at the Judy Center in Ivanhoe, and Edward Gillam was recognized as a part, a vital part, of obtaining that grant. Remember, commissioners, many of you were there. But the equation got fuzzy with the state of the state address and the recent article in the Sampson Independent. Now, all of a sudden, Commissioner Lee was working on the grant when she knew nothing about the grant prior to the Ivanhoe community attending the meeting. Russell Lee, who was nowhere around the frame of the picture, showed up.
Gilliam, your time's up.
Okay. The truth is the truth, and it doesn't change.
This is not for that.
That's fine, the truth is true.
Let me make it clear. We will not be calling names, we will not be talking about individuals. If you have something that you want to tell, we're interested in hearing it, if it's for the health of Sampson County. Other than that, we're not interested. Mr. Gilliam?
Good evening, commissioners.
State your name, Mr. Gilliam.
My name is Edward Gillam. I live at eight seventeen West Second Street, Garland, North Carolina, two eight four four one. I'd like to thank the county commissioners for this opportunity to speak on behalf of myself and other concerned citizens of Sampson County. One thing I respect is the fact that county commissioners' meetings always start with prayer, and one of the commissioners always, because prayer is very powerful, and I myself pray many times in day. So with prayer comes the belief of power of God and His holy word. Proverbs six nineteen, New International Version, reads that "One of the six things the Lord hates is a false witness who pours out lies and a person who stares up conflict in the community." I say all this to say this, all of you as county commissioners are leaders and have an obligation to serve our communities with respect and godliness in your hearts. I was asked by the local government official if I could assist in the task of securing water, public water for the community of Ivanhoe. At that time, the community was not engaged, not informed, and not publicly present, and was being led by a stagnant, ineffective lay leader with no sense of direction. Therefore, Ivanhoe was not even on the project map or needed being considered. March seventh, two thousand twenty-three marked one-year anniversary of the Ivanhoe Water Project, and for the first time of many unsuccessful years, as we as a community, with the assistance of other communities, came together recently to voice our concerns about clean drinking water. I publicly advised available grant funding through ARPA. We stood, as we currently do, united and determined because we knew the importance of clean water and creating a safe environment for the present and future generations. So much came out of this, the community in the past felt like we had been left out and forgotten because of the many setbacks and failed attempts that includes water in a secondary world which never came to existence because, but it made the rules. Receiving water for our community was a true accomplishment for experimenting to value of communication, education, direct interaction with local government. Trust and integrity are important characteristics of leadership. Trust can be built and integrity can be shown over time. I thought we had established a trust and supportive relationship in this journey. Public acknowledgements, recognition of great works, and accolades feel good, but it is at a different level when you've really dedicated countless hours, knowledge, and expertise into a project. If you're at this level, you will not make questionable and falsified statements on public record, for you will know the process and, most of all, the intricate details as I do. I feel you as commissioners should never forget your obligation to your county, better yet the area for which you are glad to serve. I recommend that some of you should revisit your Code of Ethics located on Sampson County website, for it may assist you in the understanding of your loyal duties and conscientious actions that precedes you serve. Yes, sir.
We will not down-talk any of the commissioners.
I'm not down-talking, sir, I'm just making a recommendation.
I say you are, sir.
How's that?
We will stop that, please.
Okay, I'm done. Constructive criticism is a valuable tool and can be utilized in growing mechanism when welcomed or and/or properly received. I thank God for this direction, this blessing, and many contributions to the cause, and even though I have received many federal, state, local acknowledgements with accolades, the most important one will come when I can go to my mom's residence, turn on the faucet, and witness clean, odorous water flowing like the many blessings I have received from God. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Gilliam.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Whitney Parker?
I guess. Evening again. Whitney Parker, as you know, from the Snow Hill community. I'm here to express my concerns and the effects of the toxic waste dump that I currently live in. The passing of my parents is the beginning for me, because the common denominator is the toxins from this landfill. I spent countless hours watching my clock to administer Zofran, Phrenic and Phagia, different ailments caused by this toxic place. End of the day, moving forward, I have rodents in my backyard that run over my backyard, eat out wiring harnesses out of my car. I've spent a small fortune on pest control from Lowe's, saw it out, pest control, people to come out, can't get rid of them. I have buzzards lurking in my trees all the time to this day. You can barely go outside and stand, more or less sleep in your bed. One night I was sleeping, and the smell hit me so bad it woke me up, I couldn't go back to sleep. I couldn't even, I had to drive almost to Orchardville to get away from the smell. So the question I'm asking here, is anything the county's doing to eradicate this smell for pest control? More or less, even so, these trucks that are coming down, these back roads, kids can't even play, because these trucks are doing seventy miles an hour down these small roads. When I grew up, that's all I did is play out in the road and not in the woods. So it's a very serious problem. I'm here to address that, and that's all. I'll give my minutes to anybody else.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Philip Bale?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity. And I'd like to thank the commission for your assistance with the canoe that we finally got from the Cultural Natural Resources. Your letter of support went a long ways in getting it housed in Sampson County, so it's at the Coheri Tribal Center now. It's open for public displaying, you're welcome to come look at it anytime. What I'd like to talk about-
Please state your address.
My name is Philip Bale, eight seventy Beaver Dam Road, Clinton.
Perfect.
Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Beaver Management Assistance Program that Mr. Beasley was talking about earlier. For the last seven years, I've worked a lot in the river system, doing debris removal operations, working with NC State with water monitoring. And currently, we're working with NC State now with the Flood Planning Resilience Modeling Program, or effort. And what we're noticing and what we're looking at is what was talked about earlier with the huge beaver population that's in our counties. What concerns the tribe and most people that I talk about who are interested in our environment is the environment that's being created by the beaver population. With beavers, and with overabundance comes invasive species of plants and animals. And those species of plants include alligator weed, smart weed, and parrot feather. Parrot feathers found in aquariums. When these are put in an area that has a lot of fertilizer that comes from all the beavers and the other rodents that are in the water, then it takes over. And we've been seeing a large decrease in navigable waters through our system as time's passing, and beaver management is not taking place. You know, I'm a member of the Clinton Visitors Bureau, and one of the things we're looking at or trying to put together is a tourism package that includes kayaking. The tribe entertains over eight hundred people one year in kayaking services on, just on the little part of upper carry from Star Telephone to Five Bridges, so we know that it'll work. But with the advent of the beavers and the nutria, with all the things that are in the waters now, nutria gives me some concerns, because we have a huge livestock operations in our area, and they're boers into lagoons and ditches, and also, we all know that there's a danger there. So in short, I'd just like to appreciate, or I appreciate, consideration for a BMAP program for the county, so we can get the beavers under control. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Mattie Howell? Mattie Howell?
I believe she asked her question during the road naming.
Okay. Oh, it's double. I got you. Okay. All right. Shelley Hare.
Shelley Hare, eight twelve Elizabeth Street here in Clinton. This is for the board's consideration. The Veterans Park located at the old National Guard Armory. We have a nice park there representing the veterans and the families. And we would like for y'all to consider taking half of the parking lot and as an add-on to the park. And also two entrances for that parking area. And also that we may continue to have our annual November Memorial Day program performed there also. Just those three items that I know the EOC is relocating. And we just want to make sure that we're, we still got our anchor planted there and we're in good standing. And could these items be considered?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for listening.
We'll consider that. Thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
Abdullah Fisher.
My name is Abdullah Fisher. I live in the, where I'm from, the Snow Hill community off of Highway twenty-four. I also would like to talk about the toxic waste dump that I consider it is. What I see is no accountability because whatever's being dumped there, it can't be safe for the environment or for the people. So my question is to you guys, what are you guys going to do? Or are you guys going to do anything to help remedy this problem?
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Fred Duform.
Good afternoon. I'm Fred Duform, two oh seven North Chester Street in Clinton. I'm here to follow up with Mr. Beasley and Mr. Bell about the beaver situation. I would like for the county commissioners to consider hiring an extra trapper for the county. If you look at the county, if you go from northern end to the southern end, it's over an hour drive. So if you have a job in the northern part of the county and southern part of the county, you spend most of your time on the road and not trapping. When I started farming over ten years ago, beavers were not an issue. We trapped them in the same ditch. Once in the spring, once in the fall, we were done. Now, I call trapper every two or three months in different places. It's costing a fortune, to the point that sometimes we can't even harvest corn or cut hay because the fields are flooded, because the ditch are blocked. There is a big loss of income wasted. And also, you know, we need to, if you look at the seal behind you, I mean, you've got manufacturing, pork, agriculture, trees. I mean, all the things are impacted by the beavers right now. Land is being pushed aside because we can't do anything with it. And when the land is flooded, you can't really do much with it. The value is gone. So I do believe that it's very important to take care of the situation. I mean, beaver are just like ant, fire ants. You take care of them in your backyard, they go to the neighbor. The neighbor takes care of them, they come back to your place. That's exactly the way it is. And the problem now is that Mr. Bell said about the BMAP, we need a plan to cover the county and take care of those beavers. If we only take care landowner by landowner, the only person who will be happy is the one charging for the trapping. And, you know, think about hurricane season, when the highways, the ditches are completely blocked by the beavers, or the ditches on the land to go to the river are blocked by the beaver dams. The water has nowhere to go. So where does it stay? It stays on the highway. And who is fixing the highway? Who's paying for the highway? Well, we do. And I think if you look at the expense for the extra trapper versus how much it would cost to the upkeep of the river, the loss in revenue from the crop and the timber, you'll find out that having an extra trapper is pretty cheap. That's what I have to say. So any question, please let me know.
Any question? I think we're good. We agree with you.
Thank you.
All right. Bob Gracy.
My name is Robert Gracyk. I live at two five five six Greensbridge Road in Garland. I come before you tonight to publicly point out that this county board of commissioners and the county manager put law enforcement priorities last, and it's noticeable and shameful. The sheriff received a grant of one point two million dollars from the state to fund the purchase of body cameras for the sheriff's office, a great pro-law enforcement step. But the county doesn't have the infrastructure to store the camera data. The county wanted the sheriff to fund the purchase and the five-year operation of the cameras with the grant money received from the state. Former Assistant County Manager Susan Holder said in an email, "I suspect that this might be difficult to prepare AT&amp;T Wi-Fi yearly data storage estimated at forty-four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars annually, but I look forward to hearing how that might be accomplished." I don't think you can pay ahead of your data storage. The sheriff has made many concessions regarding the grant, including limiting the number of cameras, and the sheriff volunteered to use some of his seized asset forfeiture funds to help fund the cameras. The county has made no concessions. Are all our state-funded grants required to be totally funded for five years? May I point out that the county manager treats Sampson County EMS and the sheriff's office totally different. EMS receives a totally funded grant for their new EMS building. But what about the many cost overruns? Are they coming out of the EMS budget? Why isn't the EMS grant required to fund all the county associates with this building for five years? What about the added equipment, staffing, and daily maintenance? Why are the two county departments treated differently by the county manager? Look, the sheriff was elected by the people of the county to protect us. Why is the unelected county manager conspiring against him and his department? Commissioners, you were elected to represent us and work for us. Now we want our sheriffs, deputies, and sheriff's detention officers to be treated as if they're knights running to protect us from the lawlessness. Pay our deputies as much, not as such, not as the person who answers the phone at the county manager's office. Pay our deputies a law enforcement salary and make law enforcement a priority in this county now. I know there's a pay study or market study going on, but you treat everybody equally. The person that comes to my house to my rescue is a law enforcement officer.
We appreciate your remarks. Silence, please. Michael Fisher. Mr. Fisher. Okay, Barbara Gaskin.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, thank you, veterans, for your service. I mean that wholeheartedly. My fiance and Mr. Gilliam are the veterans that I personally know here, so thank you for your service. As former candidate for U.S. House NCO three, I have had the opportunity to travel this entire district and Sampson and Duplin Counties. I have seen firsthand the impact of your water situation. Clean air, land, and water are not debatable, and I still stand on that. The contamination from the hog waste, of course, has disproportionately affected our black communities, black and brown communities. And of course, this is unacceptable. So today, I am here to personally thank Mr. Gilliam for securing the thirteen million dollar grant. That was a step forward, and we should be grateful for his leadership. But of course, this work is not done. So Mr. Gilliam and others in Sampson County, I'm here to represent the REACH Program, NC Water Keepers, Black Voters Matter, and ACLU. I stand with you regarding your water issue. If I can help in any way, please let me know. Once again, thank you, Mr. Gilliam. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Jimmy Melvin, please.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Jimmy Melvin. I'm twenty fifty-seven Old Miss Highway, Roseboro. Happy to see y'all this afternoon. And I think we've had a great discussion here, and I just have a simple question. In, I'm about three miles from the landfill, and we, I don't know what the turn loose of the gases, but it stifles us, and we're three miles away. And if you, if you go to a certain time from my road to Roseboro, two forty-two, up to Sprive's Corner, when you come by Lakewood High School on that hill, you might as well cut your air conditioning off because it's going to suffocate you. And I'd just like to ask a question. How close are any of you to the landfill? I mean, three miles, two miles?
I'm probably, as the crow flies, six miles.
Okay.
I'm closer than that, as the crow flies.
Okay, but three, I mean, this, it determines the, like, we don't have any mountains to block anything. So when the cloud system or the fog sits down, and whatever particular time that they turn those gases, and they do it late at night, but around two or three o'clock, you might want to try to make sure you have some air sanitizers and your ducts of air conditioning pulls it in. And it's causing some real problems. So I think there's something that we just found out that they've increased this, it's about fourteen hundred acres, but they've increased it to three more hundred acres. So, and when at this point, sometime can we look at, it's going to be a cap on it? I mean, we are one of three landfills that will accept anything. And we, I requested it, and I probably, you know, probably through the American Freedom Act, you probably could get an audit of what goes in there. But I don't know if we know what goes, because there's six or seven different types of trucks that take stuff in there. And anything from animal waste from the plants, chemical waste, and the recent company, the recent folks that were cleaning up the hazardous thing in Nebraska, had an option of bringing their waste, that toxic waste, to Sampson County. But they got, had mercy on us, and they had passion on us inside to get a grant to deal with it there. But we're just, we're just a sitting duck. It's not getting better. And so it's not just the Snow Hill community. That's the Roseboro area. We are, it's supposed to be the city, but, you know, the folks, when they visit, they wonder what is wrong when they get out of the way. But it's an issue that I think we all need to get involved in because it's creating, not only that, but a health issue. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Melvin. And just to be clear, there is no expansion at this time.
But is there a cap on how long it can, the years?
They have a contract that we've entered into years ago, and that will be honored. But there is no expansion at this time, I'm aware of. Are you, Mr. Collins?
No, sir.
Okay.
So do you feel free to say what the year period was?
I want to say sometimes, depending on what's coming in, I think they got right now on the existing facility somewhere between fourteen and fifteen years left.
Now, to be clear, that's not in our purview. That's a contract that's entered in years ago. And of course, it is regulated by the state. Okay, Linda Benson.
Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Please suspend.
Thank you for listening to me tonight. There's two things I want to address.
State your name and address.
My name is Linda Benson. One oh four six three Roseboro Highway. Well, I call it Highway twenty-four because it's always been Highway twenty-four to me.
Thank you.
I didn't get a chance to say about the road, but my family lives just three houses down from the Rescue Squad Building. We've asked for our names not to be changed, and also we own the property across from us. That address does not need to be changed either. So that's the one thing I'm going to say for sure, and I'm going to stand behind that, and I'm going to fight for that, okay? Even if you say you've agreed on this, I'm not going to allow that to happen to me. Second of all, the landfill is the second toxic landfill in the United States. We are not around industry. We don't, it's piped in. I travel a lot in my job. I leave two in the morning, four in the morning, and they'll be burning this stuff, and you can't breathe. When I stay at my mother's house, it's so toxic, I cannot breathe. I literally wear a mask to bed because of the toxic. We should never allow that to happen. It's like PG&E, Three Mile Island, and it's also like the contamination at Kembla June. It will stay in your soul forever. It will give, it's like cancer in a bottle, and I'm frustrated with it, and I expect that dump to be shut down. It needs to be shut down. Not only that, when you look at the whole, and I've had a lot of experience, by the way, with environmental, you'd be surprised, at a high level. And I do not appreciate that we have just destroyed Sampson County. To me, you should just roll up the sidewalks and call it the toxic city of the USA. And I would like for you guys to look at that. I would like for you guys to, and example, I read up on this, and I know they've allowed the toxics from Brunswick County now, the same thing, the same toxics that happened when they had the train wreck in Ohio? Well, what happens? This stuff is toxic. It is cancer forming. And what happens to that? It's in the air, it's in the ground, it's in your home, it's in your body. It increases cancer. So who's going to be responsible for that? And so therefore, if that's the same thing that's being transported from Brunswick County to Sampson County, what are we getting? Roseboro and Sampson County is not the trash dump for the United States. However, it's being the trash dump for the United States. And I'd appreciate if you look into it, shut it down, or if we have to go forward and go with it, then all of us as a group, go with it and shut it down.
All right. Has anyone else got anything? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Paul Fisher. I live at nine sixty-six Marion Ames Road. That's right next to the landfill. Now, y'all are not responsible for being there. What you're going to be held responsible for is letting it contain and get out of order like it is. So I've been messing with this thing for thirty, forty years, fighting against this landfill. Nothing can't be done until the last few months or so, when it starts to spread all over the county, which I'm glad to have. So it's a bring attention to what we've been bothered with for the last fifteen, twenty years. So when the air blow, let it blow wherever it want to blow. And y'all understand what we've been going through this last years. I can't even go outside and sit on my deck because of the smell. And I've retired, I did my service in the military, I can't even enjoy myself. I don't know where y'all live at. And there's one other thing. When you have issues in other parts of the county, Clinton, and when it's talking about widening the roads, there was a lot of talk here about suing because the contractor was behind, and people couldn't get in the churchyard and a whole lot of other stuff. But you never hear anything from y'all about the landfill. I would love to have a meeting with somebody, all of you, so I can give you my personal opinion about how it's supposed to be done, or how things is going. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Does anyone else have anything they want to say? Okay. I'm going to limit it to two more people. Those of you who have not signed up, I'm sorry, but we've had. but we've had twenty people speak.
I'm Ann Knowles, and I'm at six eighteen Horn Ryan Road. But more importantly, I'm your veteran service officer. And I appreciate the veterans showing up tonight because we are concerned. And I appreciate Mr. Godwin, what you said, Commissioner Godwin. And I know that Mr. Colsey has, has, he and I have spoken briefly on it. That park is important to us. All those bricks represent a family. Some of them were killed in service, some of them died for their service-connected disabilities, and some of them are just the children put a brick out there for their father or their mother. And it's their place to come and walk around it and look at it. And I find little Mentos all the time on the bricks. I found a set of keys with a girl's picture on it. And it was, when I checked into it, tried to find out, those keys was from a sixteen-year-old because her daddy's brick was there and she put a set of, of keys on it because she had her, her license. That's meaningful. And I know that our county is always in, needing funds. I mean, you look at my office, we're always needing funds. But let's don't sell property for money. Let's look at what we could do for the county, for the veterans to expand our park. We can't expand our park any. You know, we, we got to have property to expand it on. And I will say that now, the county does mow the grass. And my vet council, I have members from my vet council that go out and mow the grass and fertilize it. But the veterans in Sampson County are the ones that have paid every bit of money for that park. Um, we had a county manager, Jerry Hobbs. I asked for it. Could we do it? He granted us permission. He said, "But we can't pay." Everything out there has been paid for out of pockets of veterans or their families, putting bricks out there for their families. So, please consider how important that park is to the veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Knowles. Thank you very much. All right, is anyone else? All right, only one more after this gentleman, if anyone wants to speak. State your name and address.
I'm Darrell Price, uh, thirteen ninety-one Mount Maria Church Road. Uh, as Ann has stated about how important that park is to us, but I also have another concern. Our office has been shrinking. We get more veterans. Can, is there any way that we can utilize that building that's there? Because you have a parking lot, we, we have our, our space to honor the veterans, and make that a whole veterans center like, using the building as an office? Could that be considered? I know maybe you might have to renovate a little bit or something like that. But, um, I understand that used to be emergencies, uh, uh, or, you know, building. So, some of the wiring and stuff might still be utilized for computers and stuff.
Okay.
Is that, is that a consideration?
Certainly. Everything's on the table at this point.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. One more is all we can take. Going once? Okay, come on.
My name is Sherwin Park. I'm at three nineteen Justice Road. And, uh, I'm probably eight hundred feet from the landfill. It's, uh, I'm a veteran. I'm a veteran. Uh, I have problems with my sinuses. I'm sick most of the time, congestion. I mean, uh, it's pretty much frontline. So, I don't know. We got a problem. And, and it's, it's, if anyone that lives there, uh, come in and pretty much say basically the same thing that I'm saying. Can we get some help? We can't breathe. We got a little water, but the problem was, uh, when it first dug that real big giant mountain they got now, a lot of us, uh, lost our water. We came over here. Nothing. That's been, Mr. Fisher, how long ago?
I can't remember.
It's been a long time. So, I mean, we, uh, I don't know, maybe, maybe we done something wrong. I don't know, but we need some help.
We, we, we hear you and we appreciate you stepping up. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
All right, folks. We appreciate you coming and accepting the motion to adjourn.
Side move.
Second. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.